Fantastic. Thanks. According to Apple, it's four oh two and I will call this October. Oh, good golly, November third. Regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order as a public service reminder. The meetings are always open to the public. They're meetings of the Board of Selectmen to conduct their business. If you would like to offer comment, we have two opportunities at the beginning and the end. So I would like to make a motion. To add. I'll make two motions. The first one. To add under new business four point three. DPW crew later, crew leader recommendation from the road foreman.
That would be six point three, I think.
You're right, it would be six point three. My numbering is off on my meeting notes. Thanks, Rufus.
So moved.
Thank you. Um, so is that a second? Sorry, I made the motion. Great. All those in favor?
I.
I.
And I'd also like to make a motion to add. Request from Swift House Task Force for seven thousand dollars to hire an architect.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Could I add one?
Yeah, apologies, Joyce. That should go next in the. Sorry. I botched up that.
That should be seven, should be seven point five, I would think.
Go ahead, Rufus. What were you gonna say? I mean, Glenn.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to add one more if I could make it to seven point six. Uh, could we, could we talk about the second noise and traffic report from, uh? Gosh, it was three meetings ago, uh, and um, I'd like to just talk about that, uh, because we never. We never, um. I don't think we've closed the, the loop on that one. So I'd like to talk that, that about a bit if it could.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
I.
I. Thanks. Sorry, I had to recognize my. Numbering. Um, so we'll go to. Two point one approval of the October twentieth. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. I have a couple of minor corrections. Page. Three at the top. It reads talk on social media, but it should actually read talk in the media. The next section EV charging station update. The first bullet mentions repairing the EV charging station, but um, we wouldn't be doing that. It's replacing. That EV charging station. And then down on the street state, streetscape construction update. The second bullet should read curb installation, not curve. Installation. I think that was it. Yeah. Anybody else have any corrections?
Nope, I don't.
Alrighty. I'll make a motion to. Approve the October twentieth meeting minutes with corrections as noted.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Alright.
Thanks. Correspondence, we have none in the folder. We'll go to our first public comment.
Good, um. Can I mention one thing? Uh, we did get an email, though. It didn't make the folder. I don't know if you all saw the email.
From Matt Starr.
From Matt Starr as well. Just, we just got that briefly, uh, yeah, just recently, but.
Came twenty minutes ago. We'll have to. There's.
We'll wait.
But that's the one, not the one I was going to refer to, uh, Kathleen Lindemeyer.
Yeah.
You see that one?
Apologies. So, yes, um.
So that one came two days ago.
Find it, yes. Oh, my, 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 um. Yeah, so we had, um. Talked about, um. A couple of years ago. With Kathleen on. Renaming the upstairs conference room um, to recognize um, her mom, Maureen Brady, for her accomplishments as, um. The first female for selectmen and a, a number of other accomplishments and um, obviously, a lot of things have transpired since then, um. And. So we, we do need to, I, we, I do want to honor her and her. Commitment and her accomplishments. Um, obviously, we all know that conference room has been repurposed, so, um. We can rethink this. I don't know if we want to have this. Discussion at this moment. I should probably call. Kathleen and talk to her about it as well.
Yeah, I don't think we should. I mean, you know, we could talk about it now, but um, uh, this is new to me. I hadn't seen uh, this, uh, this document that she sent us. Um, and I guess this conversation started two years ago, you said, Jean?
More than two years ago.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, it was a long time ago.
So, yeah, I mean, um, I, I maybe a call to her, uh, to see, uh, what the thing is, and I would love to get this on the agenda for the next meeting, and we could, we could really discuss this.
Yeah.
Um, Jean. On March tenth, March tenth, twenty twenty, you made a motion to dedicate the second floor meeting room in honor of Maureen Brady. Mr. Maxon seconded it and the motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jean, uh, Joyce, what meeting was that?
March tenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Which was literally a week before we closed Town Hall. Beginning of COVID. So. Um, I will, I'll follow up with Kathleen. Brady. Uh, public comment. Getting the room. No, see any hands up? Virtual or otherwise. So we'll move on to um, tax refunds. We have um, eight tax refunds totaling two thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty six cents, and I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I.
Thank you. Um, under the initial six point one new business, we have a number of appointments to approve. We do have one typo. Um, that was just brought to our attention late this afternoon under the Conservation Commission, Elizabeth Baker. Um, known to most of us as Lyddie Baker. Um, her. Her seat is a full seat. It's not an alternate seat, and that is a three-year um, appointment, so that would expire in uh, twelve one of two thousand twenty-five. So making note of that, I will um, make a motion to approve the appointments. Um, as presented with corrections. All in one bolus, Rufus.
Yeah.
How efficient?
Thank you.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
I.
I. And we thank them for. Their. Commitment and passion. And their volunteer work. This is again, pretty amazing. Moving on to six point two approval of the December second town meeting agenda. It is in the folder. Um, the language is from. Town attorney. And I'll um. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented for the December second town meeting.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Jean, do we? Glenn and I have to come in and sign that?
Yeah.
So tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Yep, that would be great. It'll be, we'll make sure that it's on the, you know, the tip of Joyce's desk there. Come in for a quick signature. Then below, we also have in there to. To talk about the explanatory text, what we'd like to include there. So all those in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. So under. New business. Um, we added the DPW crew lead, crew leader recommendation. From the road foreman, and I see Rick is on the call. I'm gonna turn the floor over to him.
And we posted the position in the. Garage. And only one member of the staff approached me about it, and that would be Peter Bernard, so I would recommend that he become the crew leader.
Second. For. I guess make a motion to. Approve Rex. Recommendation. To name Peter Bernard as crew leader.
Second.
Joyce, do we need to include, um? An official start date and the, um. Wage?
Yes.
Okay. When are you thinking the start date would be, Rick?
Uh. Either this week or next week, whatever. So choose.
We could do it Monday.
Okay.
Monday, the. Seventh.
Is that generally for payroll? Um, Joyce, how we would do it?
Yes.
Okay.
And. We don't have the figures in front of us, but it was. Can we say it? With the salary that was presented at the last meeting?
Well, let's.
Forgot what it was.
Yeah, I have it right here. Um, thirty-four sixty-five. For an hourly rate.
Per hour.
So we do, we should really do this as either an addendum and, and then, an addendum to the motion, or you can rescind, and we can, you can redo the motion.
Rescind.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we. Um, hire Peter Bernard. As. Crew chief. For town crew. At. Thirty-four ten an hour.
Thirty-four sixty-five.
Oh, thirty-four sixty-five an hour, starting Monday, November seventh. Two thousand.
Hit all the points. I'll second that. Be missing anything else, Joyce?
No.
Okay. All those in, any questions? All those in favor? I.
I.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Um, under, so I'm sorry, was the motion to, for the Swift House under? New or old?
Old.
Seven point five.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving on to. Old business. Um, the salary review, I don't have any update. Onto seven point two discussion regarding town meeting for the School Resource Officer and EMS staffing, so, um. There's, we had made a motion at the last meeting to um, draft an explanatory. Um. I think they call it explanatory text. Um. And we should just. Have a brief discussion on what, um, you know, where we have to make sure that we don't influence the voters, don't, um. We, we're not painting a picture. We're just giving. Basic information that, um, you know, we, we know these are complex. Question, complex issues that we're covering. Um, there will also be time for a question and answer in the town meeting, but this is. A way to get a little bit more information out to the voters. Prior to. The um, meeting and referendum. So the. Um. Statute. Reads that, um. Each such explanatory text shall be prepared by the municipal clerk and shall specify the intent and purpose of each such proposal or question. Such explanatory texts shall not advocate either the approval or disapproval of the proposal or question. Uh, the municipal clerk shall cause such questions or proposals and such explanatory texts to be printed in sufficient supply for public dissemination. And also shall approve for the printing of such explanations of proposals or questions on posters of a size to be determined by said clerk. At least three such posters shall be posted at each polling place at which electors will be voting on such proposals or questions. Um. And then there's, goes on to talk about locations, um. Uh, the explanatory text shall also be furnished to each absentee ballot applicant pursuant to subsection D. Such explanatory texts shall be subject to the approval of the municipal attorney. So. Just to start, we have. Two questions, so. Do we want to have, um? Two separate sheets? One sheet for each question? Do we just want to have two sections? One section for each question? Um. I am going to try to find the explanatory text for the, um. The referendum ballot question to change the state constitution that's coming up this Tuesday. That was a recent one that I found. See if I can find it. Yeah, sorry, I thought I had it closer at hand. Um. I mean, because they have, so it's only one question. They have it broken up into a number of sections. One is. The first section is the ballot question, so it's the actual question. Um, next is content and purpose of the proposed amendment, and because this is coming from the Board of Ed, it probably makes sense to. Have Scott be part of this. Drafting. And then they have um, further explanation, so it's a couple paragraphs of a little bit more detail, and then they have the actual text of the. Proposed constitutional amendment, which. We wouldn't really need that. And then the process. Let me see if I can find it on a quick web search.
I would think that. We don't need separate sheets for each question. I think that's a weight of paper. Um, I would think it would be pretty straightforward. Each question. Should, I think, cover sort of the timeline, which is. Board of Ed proposed this. For the. Resource officer. And, um. You know, include the, the amount. You know, I, I agree that, you know, Scott should have a baby, let's say, in, in wording. Their reasoning to, you know. Ask for a school resource officer, and we might add that. You know, we thought. The additional coverage of town might help. Traffic, uh, et cetera. For the rest. Remainder of the year. And the cost, um, I mean, factual, very factual and straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that same thing with the. EMS staffing, there'd be another paragraph that would. Line up. The, um. Numbers for, that the fire department are, are basing this request on. Um. And that. You know, I, I, I think, uh. Overall statement could be that the Board of Selectmen feel that. Because. Passage of. Either one or both will impact. The budget that this is up to the voters. Leave it at that.
I did just.
I, I don't think that we need more than, you know. Half a page to each one.
So that's the one up on your screen right now. Um. For the constitutional amendment, like that whole. This whole middle section, you know, we wouldn't need that part because it's not. Um. Changing language of a foundation document. So I think.
I don't have my, uh. I don't have my magnifying glass, too.
Yes, sorry. Um, here's another one that was, um. In the search results. So it's. It's almost like the. Agenda that we just approved, but with a little bit more explanatory information. Then at the bottom, they have their polling locations. But. Seems pretty straightforward, um. So we'll. Draft something up. Now. Um, it, it's not specific whether the. Board, um. Has to approve the explanatory text, but if you'd like to, we can, um, do a special meeting. Um, maybe late next week. That's as long as we get it. Drafted out to Randy and, um. Back from him.
Sure, I can do a special meeting.
It would be nice for us to see the draft before the meeting.
Yeah.
I, I. Sorry, that's what we were doing today, but.
So. How is, I know Fridays are. Sort of. A double-edged sword. Um. What if we were to do it? Oh, next Friday is Veterans Day. So we could do Thursday. Late afternoon. Does this time work next Thursday? It's a little bit tight to get it turned around because. You know, Darlene's got the election on Tuesday, so I'm not. Sure, we'll. Be able to get it turned around, but we'll do our best.
I mean, this won't be long, right? This will be five to ten minutes, this meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, could we squish it into a lunch? Might be crazy, but. Like twelve o'clock on Thursday? The tenth?
Anytime on Thursday.
Okay.
It's twelve o'clock on Thursday.
Noon. You will.
So is this an appetizer, or is it?
Yes.
Alrighty, we'll look to do that.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. Back to where I was. Policy and procedure manual. I'm waiting for a letter back from Rose Kalor. Um, so I don't have anything further on that. Uh, streetscape update, um. We had a visit from the governor today, so I was not at the meeting. I was there for the last bit of the walkthrough. Um, final concrete is getting poured this week. And we've started a, a punch list that will become more of a, no pun intended, concrete punch list, um, that will. Start hacking away. With Matheron. And be working on those items in the next week. We have a, you know, a number of things that were on there from. Weeks and weeks ago, the, um, redoing the. Two of the curves at, um, Elizabeth Street, some other. Work, um. So we'll. There's, there'll just be more on that as we, you know, get down to the very bitter end. The team stayed until after six o'clock, a few of them on Friday night, because we were, um, really pushing them to get. The asphalt buttoned up on Route seven for the run on Friday, and. They, they stayed. Way late to do that pickup. Gosh, they had to have picked up over a hundred barrels, um, and also do some, um, patchwork for. Kingsley, because, um, they were getting sort of left with a little bit of a messy entrance for the big weekend, so we, um. Really all sort of pulled together and stacked brick, and they came over with some stone dust, so, um, it all was buttoned up for the weekend. So I was happy about that. They did a good job.
I've heard a lot of positive comments about the, about the project from people in the last couple of weeks in particular, so, um.
Right.
And, um, and even for Halloween, that was, that was great, uh, as well, so, um.
Yeah.
So.
And the governor did notice, because he was here in June. And. He was like, aren't these blacktop when I was here the last time? So that was good that he noticed.
Good.
Are we gonna have a record meeting?
Yes. Don't jinx it. Yes.
I know. Open to the second, uh, wait a minute, we have. Um, sorry.
Swift House.
Two different agendas here. Um, so the next was, uh. The Swift Horse, Swift House Rec, Task Force request for seven thousand dollars to hire an architect. Glenn, I'm gonna have you jump in here, um, as the. Person on the committee.
Sure, I could jump in. There's, there's nothing new to report. We didn't, uh, we haven't met since the last time we've met, um, and, and. Uh, you know, I think. I think we had said seven thousand dollars. I, I did see, um, on the Swift House, uh, implementation plan. That I think, um, I, I think you did there, Jean, uh, I saw four thousand five hundred for something, um, so I don't know if that was a similar. Uh, deal for an architect, so I, I don't know, four thousand five hundred, seven thousand. Do, do we, do we know? Because I don't know. Specific numbers for an architect. I haven't. Gone that far yet. I don't know if I should, I mean, should, should, uh, how much would be needed, and is it? Is there any monies in the year-to-date budget? I think we want to know what was left for the year for Swift House. Would it come from here? Because it seemed that the discretionary fund that was not going to work. I think.
Right, so, um, the. Current through today, there's, um, two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Uh. Left. Um, in the Swift House. Line budget.
Two thousand nine hundred and thirty left. That, that's. That's from the thirteen thousand. Right, thirteen?
That's from that. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so not much left.
Right. I'm sorry, I'm just, I just got this from Barbara. Hang on one second, um. Yeah, so the total expenditure was eight thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents. And the budget, sorry, so that leaves a little bit more. For Dean, oh, my, oh. Forty-one thirty-one that leaves.
Forty-one thirty-one.
And Joyce, so, um. If you can just jump in here, I'm just taking a look at the. The detail of what's been sent, so, um, the. Things like the regular bills, Aquarian, Eversource, those are gonna, you know, keep coming. Where early, you know, we're not even halfway through the. Where early, you know, we're not even halfway through the. Budget year. Are there, is there anything else that was on deck, Joyce, for this, for the Swift House in your budget? You're on mute, both. Panels, there we go. Oh, almost.
There we go, sorry. I haven't put anything concrete, no pun intended, in the works because I was kind of waiting to see where this board was gonna go. Obviously, there's additional repairs I could do, there's also the regular maintenance. Which.
Right.
So we haven't even hit winter yet. And we need to heat this building, so if there's four thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Just maintaining this thing for the winter is gonna take up a large chunk of that, so. Seven thousand dollars for an architect is clearly not going to work from this budget, but even the four thousand five hundred that I saw in the plan last week, it's not gonna work either. So, so, so the short answer is, is no, the budget cannot support. Hiring an architect.
Right.
Well. It might, but we have to. Look at the budget more carefully, which brings me to the point that. We need to see. A year-to-date, line-by-line. Budget. And I'd like to have that presented to us before our next meeting. And we probably should be getting these. Maybe not every meeting, or, you know, but at least quarterly to see line by line the entire. Budget. Year-to-date, everything. Again. The budget is not. Set in stone, it's a guideline. So, and I, I kind of disagree that we can't use contingency for whatever we decide we need to use it for. You know, that's, that's up to us. I also think that. Numbers that would emanate from an architectural. Review of, of the needs of the Swift House are an absolute necessary step before the town can make an educated decision. As to what the future might hold for the Swift House. So. I think it's important that we find the money. I don't think we can do it at this meeting cuz we don't have the information, but. We should get a. Complete. Report. From the treasurer, line. Individual line items, everything, where we're standing.
In terms of the, in terms of an architect, who should we go to? You know, I mean, seven thousand, four thousand five hundred, are these, are these numbers that come from somebody? I don't know. I mean, four thousand five hundred I see here, is that, is that from someone?
Joyce, was that?
That was from John Wilmington during the ADA meeting that we had.
So it does lead us back around to the. Task force's. Charge and. How, you know, obviously, we need to. Have a, let's get a budget year-to-date from Barbara. See if we can. Find the money in the budget already. But we have these two sort of parallel. Paths, one is the. What you all in the task force have been talking about, and then the other path of the ADA compliance. So. And we need to write up. Some sort of RFP to send out to get. To find an architect. I mean, it can be. Pretty simple. But I think we need to. Write up a brief RFP, we'll post it to the. Towncamp website, we can send it to the cog and. Other. We wanna put in the newspaper, I don't think architects are particularly trawling the. Classifieds in the Waterbury Republican for work. But I think there's a wide enough sphere that we can. Advertise out and. Get a couple of bids back and. Hire. Once we find the money, hire somebody to do this. Basically, like you're saying, Rufus, you know, an assessment. So I'll. Have Barbara tomorrow's her long day, I'll have her send out a budget, year-to-date budget for everybody, and then we'll. Have to come back to this at the next meeting, or we can. Pony it in the special meeting, hopefully next Thursday.
Okay.
But we have about an hour, right? Is, would that be accurate, Glenn, for you for a noon meeting?
Oh, yes, yeah, I'll make that work, I mean, I, I could go a little bit more than ten minutes.
Okay. So. Did we have, Joyce, did we have one more new item on the old business?
Glenn wants to talk about the second noise and traffic report, seven point six.
Yeah, just to bring that up, if I could, seven point six, the second noise and traffic report, not the first one that we, that we agreed upon. But the second one, we, we talked about this at the, gosh, I think it was the October sixth meeting that we had. And, and it was, you know, I, I, we, we read the report and I remembered that. You know, I think, Gene, you had a few, a few editorial comments about that. The existing three-year contract with State Police, that's actually two years. So that was, that was in error. And, and I think the very, the very top of the reports, you said you had a few issues with some of the wording with that. So I just wanted to just say to, to you two, the group, that, that the Noise and Traffic Subcommittee. At least the members I've talked to, they, they feel that we could make the edits. If, if edits are needed, if we still think that, and, and we can put this to bed, so, so, so we don't. The committee doesn't feel like we need to meet again to, to edit this, they, they, they trust our judgment with, with making the required edits, so, so if we want to do that. We could. If we want to pass this, we can, we can put the committee in this. To bed and, and end it, so. So it doesn't happen, have, it doesn't have to happen now, if you want to peruse this for, for the next regular meeting.
Yeah, so we'll resend it out to the board.
Yep.
For the next. Meeting and with, I'll redline it with just the suggested edits, does that make sense?
Yes, I, I think that'll, that satisfies them and, and me, so. Good.
We did get the encroachment permit. On the. The crosswalk. I don't know what you wanna call them pylons, I guess. So I know Rick's working on that, I'm not sure how long. They'll be able, if we can put them out right now, because I don't think you can have, Rick, you can't have like two encroachment permits. At the same time or something like that. So do we have to wait until? This? You're on mute. You're, you're muted.
So I'd wait till they're done working on the walks anyway, cuz if you put them out, they'd have to keep moving them for, through different traffic patterns wherever they're working, so.
Okay.
And if we, like, for the champagne straw, I'll put them out. Stuff like that, but.
Okay. Thanks. Alrighty, public comment. Second round. Don't see any. Real or virtual hands up. So we will. I will move to adjourn. At. Four forty-two.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor? Aye. Hopefully, this will be a trend. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, you too.